I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Thursday morning, August 1st, hard to believe, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunt-Housen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
His left, we have, I was gonna say Nadine, she was here filling in for you last week, Brandy, Brandy Spangler, she's taking care of us today. And to my right, thank you, by the way, Brandy, to my right would be Candace Payne, she's out of town today, Commissioner Candace Payne. So over here, we have Deputy County Attorney Sneak Ohash, Egan Shea, good morning, gentlemen, and Roger Balt, our Chief Administrative Officer. Thank you all for being here. There is a sign-in sheet in the front as well as agenda, so we'd like everyone to sign in prior to leaving today, since we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. And with some enthusiasm, our first item on the agenda here is a proclamation celebrating the 75th anniversary of the Mangolch Fire. We're not celebrating the fire necessarily, we're celebrating the remembrance and those that have given so much, given it all, to help move the response to wildfire forward. And I'll read the proclamation, then we have some guests here today. So it reads, Lewis and Clark County Proclamation, remembering the Mangolch Fire 75 years later. Whereas August 5th marks 75 years since 13 elite and brave firefighters lost their lives in the Mangolch Fire of 1949, and whereas their memories live on today through celebrations of remembrance that will take place this August 2024 in Helena and Mangolch, and whereas the painful yet important lessons learned as a result of the Mangolch Fire live on today and improve safety for firefighters and a better understanding of fire behavior, thus informing many of today's firefighting tactics and procedures. And whereas the 75th Remembrance Events planned this coming week will honor the men who lost their lives in the tragedy and will allow us to reflect on our ever-evolving relationship with wildfire. And whereas we recognize the 75th anniversary to honor the 16 souls that responded to the Mangolch Fire and give special regard to the 13 who lost their lives that day. And whereas the Commission welcomes family members and friends of the fallen and encourages all citizens to take the time to learn the history of the Mangolch Fire and actively participate in the remembrance celebrations that will take place this August 3 through 6. Now therefore be it proclaimed that August 3 through 6 be Mangolch Fire Remembrance Days in Lewis and Clark County, dated this first day of August 2024. So there is the proclamation, and we will hand this off to our friends that are here from the Forest Service. But prior to doing that, I'd like to invite all of you up, I guess, to the microphone. And whomever's gonna lead, you can introduce the gang and tell us about the upcoming events this week and the importance of the celebration, or the remembrance. Welcome. You might have to push the button to green there if it's red. There you go. You're on.
Okay.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. And just a very special thank you for this proclamation on behalf of the Forests and the District. I mean, this is, I mean, we all love our community, and this is a very important, like you said, and very special and distinctive memory of our community and the agency as a whole. So thank you for acknowledging that. And we do have, like you said, a lot of events lined up from August 3rd through the 6th. And because someone else knows this better than I do, I'm gonna hand it over to her, even though she wanted me to talk about it. But before I do that, I can introduce everyone who's here with me. So here is Emily Platt, she's a Forest Supervisor. Kiara Chipriano, she is our Public Affairs Officer. Roy Glueker, he is our Recreation Program Manager for the Forests. And then Karen Vidal, and she is our Acting Deputy Forest Supervisor.
And what about you?
Oh. I'm Kathy Bushnell, I'm the District Ranger here in Helena. So with that.
Unnecessary introduction, because we all know you, but thank you for introducing.
All right. Well, thank you very much again. And I will hand it over to Kiara to give us a rundown of the events for everyone this weekend.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. It's been so rewarding to see the community pull together to host a number of commemorative events these next three days. Starting on Saturday, there'll be showings at the Myrna Loy with panelists to talk about what was learned from this fire and just talk about a parallel event where we actually have a survivor from the Higgins Ridge Fire who will also be sharing his experience. On Sunday, there's an event at York Community Hall. It will be a hike that remembers the York Fire, which was happening at the same time as the Mangolch Fire. And, you know, they'll be able to talk about how those two incidents overlapped. That afternoon on the walking mall, we have a number of events, including Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group, DNRC, and others who will talk about building defensible space around homes, letting homeowners know what they can do to, you know, help firefighters and help protect their property. And there'll also be an opportunity to make wreaths in remembrance of the men right outside Birds and Beesley's, as well as a number of other community partners there. And then Monday is our main event that's going to take place at the Capitol. We'll have a tour train running from the Safeway parking lot that will bring people starting at 4:00 PM up to the Capitol grounds. And then 5:15 is when our speakers start, and the keynote will be John McLean. And there'll be a moment of silence at 5:56 when we know James Harrison's watch stopped at Mangolch, followed by the flyover of the original plane from 1949 that is now the Montana State Plane.
It's amazing. So I question, I understand there's also a commemorative beer. So we gotta.
There is. Our community partners have been so great. Everyone has volunteered their skill sets, including Riley Tubbs over at Ten Mile. So yes, he's launched a commemorative beer as well, and the proceeds for that are going towards our efforts for fundraising.
Great.
I have. We'll have to try it.
Oh, that's great. Questions or comments, Commissioner?
Is there a website where, or a place where we can go to get a list of all the activities and see what all we can attend?
Yes. Montana Discovery Foundation, which is a nonprofit that's been helping coordinate all the fundraising efforts for this event, they are hosting all the information on their website, including a virtual tour of Mangolch that was just released by the Rocky Mountain Research Station and National Wildfire Working Group. So it's a really neat, three-dimensional tour people can do since the area is pretty inaccessible.
I know that this is not just of local interest, but regional. We attended a Western States Commissioners Meeting down by Yosemite and toured some of the areas that had recently burned down there and talked about the coordination. But there was a gentleman that put on a presentation on smoke jumping. And afterwards, I walked up to him and mentioned this, and he said, "I plan to be there." And he's from Southern California. So I hope you have a great turnout and a great commemoration of the event.
Thank you.
Yes, and now that some of the formal stuff is done, I just really want to, those that might be watching today, this is televised and, you know, we have, it's the best reality television on, I'm sure, out there. So in my mind, the ratings are off the charts, right? But I'd like to just encourage everyone really to take the time to get engaged. And it's really special that all of you have, and the agencies that have been partnering and the organizations that have been partnering, to pull this together because it's really important. Not only to remember those that have fallen, but to understand how it's impacted our lives. And if people haven't been there, I've had the opportunity to hike up there, I think, four times. I've gone to all the crosses and gone from the water and from the backside in and tried to follow the guide in the book, in Norman McLean's book, Young Men and Fire, and find where Dodge lit the fire, his safety fire, backfire, whatever you want to call it, and where they crossed over and kind of Sully and Ramsey, right? Where the two that made it. And so it's quite a powerful experience to be up there and to see the crosses where these men fell and also understand the impact that it had on their lives and their families' lives. I thought it was a really good article in Montana Free Press about the Dieter family and all of that this last week. So I learned a lot from that and just really important time. And, you know, I don't want to point him out or say anything, but I know that Deputy County Attorney Sneak Ohash is kind of a, he's been into this a lot, right? Really into the history and Norman McLean especially and all of that. So I don't know if you want to say anything, you're welcome to. But great stuff. I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to participate in this, and I want to make sure our community really is encouraged to come out and get involved. So.
Thank you very much. And just a note too. So we have about, sorry. So we have about 80 family members coming to the event and participating in all of this. And they're gonna have a private moment later that's outside of a public event. But yeah, more than, I think more than 80 family members will be joining us here for the event too. So.
That's impressive. I look forward to meeting some of them if possible.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Be there on the 5th for sure. So anything else, Commissioner? Anything else from any of you? Anything else you want to share about this weekend or other things?
No.
But we would love to give you the copy of the proclamation, or the proclamation, we have a copy of it, and come up front here maybe, and we can get a picture together. That's okay?
Big smiles?
Thank you very much. And it's unnecessary to stick around, though you're welcome to be here as long as you'd like. We've got all kinds of fun stuff on our agenda today. Fun for us. We will move on, though, and I'll move to consent action items. Mr. Balt, we'll pass the torch to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rolfe, you have one item. It's item 3A on the agenda today. It's the Vendor Claims Report for the weekend in August 2, 2024. Staff recommends approval, and Marnie Bentley is here as usual. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
All right. Any public comment on the Vendor Claims Report? Any public comment? All right, hearing none?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the Consent Action Item 2A as explained by Mr. Balt.
Second, moving second to approve the Vendor Claims Report as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll backtrack here because I didn't invite the public to make any comments about our proclamation or anything, if we'd like to do that. I know we have our DES folks in the room as well. Anybody else? Any public comment on our proclamation related to this weekend's event and the anniversary of the Mangolch Fire? Okay, we will move on then. We have, we set aside a time every quarter for elected official updates. And so we invite other elected officials to come if they'd like to, county elected officials. So we don't see any in the room this time, but sometimes they have updates from their offices and like to give us updates. So it doesn't look like today there are any. So we will move on from that. Next item on the agenda is Cooperative Fire Support Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and State of Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kyle Sturgill-Simon, Emergency Manager for Lewis and Clark County. Okay, before you is a Cooperative Fire Support Agreement. As you are well aware, during times of emergency disaster incidents within the county, we're very lucky in that we oftentimes get a lot of help from within the county and without the county. We also have an opportunity to help others in need when they have their own incidents. And this agreement allows us to formalize that, and the DNRC is so kind as to, when they ask for our assistance in an incident, willing to reimburse us for our costs. So this establishes our rates, our equipment expenses and whatnot. And if they ask us to go out, we can then assist. For us, it's incident management in terms of planning section needs, liaison needs, things along those lines. And there are a couple of attachments. We've got the Personnel Billing Rate Form. Again, that's for salary and expenses for our staff. Our travel policy to cover any incidental expenses, our unoperated incidental rental agreement, which covers our vehicles and equipment that we may take with us that are needed. And then the last one, which is a chief certification, that would apply if we were to be doing any active firefighting on the line, but we're gonna be pushing paper mostly.
So, okay. Thank you. Questions? Comments?
None.
So essentially, for those that might be watching, we're putting together this agreement for future needs. If you are called out by DNRC, in this case, everything's set to go, and our agreement is ready. We don't have to do it on the fly at the time.
Exactly. So oftentimes, kind of the way our business works is we're not given very much heads up. We're trying to have a permitting policy for disasters where people have to give us two weeks' notice before they have a disaster, and so far that hasn't worked out. Sometimes it's just a matter of hours, and having this established ahead of time allows us to make sure that we're covered here locally before we leave to go help others and then deploy. It's also a great training opportunity. Autumn is the DES Coordinator in the program, and myself. We both have open taskbooks where we're actively working towards professional development. And a lot of those requirements have to be done on an incident, and other people's incidents are the best places to practice.
Great, great. And Autumn just recently had opportunity to go to Maui and help as well.
Yeah, exactly. So that was a slightly different program. That was a state-to-state agreement, but we were able to assist with the recovery efforts for Lahaina and Maui.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner?
No, it just looks like a great thing to have these agreements written down. And if we happen to get a little bit of extra, we could put in a fund towards replacing some of the equipment or adding to the equipment in some, down the road. Well, that helps us to be efficient and respectful of the costs involved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion please, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the Cooperative Fire Support Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the State of Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, as explained by Kyle Sturgill-Simon.
Second, it's been moved in second to approve the cooperative agreement as presented. Further discussion, Commissioner?
No more.
Nor do I. Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, we move on. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-75 to levy and assess the Mount Vista Lone Pine Rural Improvement District Number 1998-1. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rolfe, my name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you will be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $400 per developed property and $100 upon each undeveloped property within the Mount Vista Lone Pine Rural Improvement District. With 79 benefiting properties, a total of $28,300 will be assessed annually to fund maintenance of the district. This district is located west off Bird's Eye Road, just north of the Bird's Eye Fire Station. You can see it on your map here in brown. The Mount Vista Lone Pine RID was created as the result of a petition in 1998 to improve and maintain Lone Pine Road, Mount Vista Road, and Jaybird Drive. Maintenance provided by this district includes snow removal and sanding, grading, culvert maintenance, gravel maintenance, and other maintenance as necessary to preserve the road improvements. The maintenance assessment has been $180 per developed property and $45 per undeveloped property since 2017. However, the assessment is not sufficient to provide the maintenance intended in the resolution that created the district. Staff joined two different road committee meetings with residents this winter to discuss options for the district. On May 15th, staff met with residents at the Bird's Eye Fire Station for a Mount Vista Lone Pine Road Committee meeting. Residents agreed to raise the assessment to the proposed $400 per developed and $100 per undeveloped property to continue to provide maintenance for the district. This area has a pretty well-organized road committee, and they meet fairly regularly at the Bird's Eye Fire Station to talk about road issues. And during that meeting, they did actually just hold a vote for everybody in the audience, and the whole audience was supportive of this increase at that time. Legal notice of the increase and the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on July 13th and July 20th, 2024. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received for this item. Staff recommend approval of the resolution, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
It sounds like everything's been done in order.
Yeah. So just to reiterate, a very active road committee. They've met multiple times. You've met with them multiple times, and in May, they, as well as, as you said, the audience that was there, essentially endorsed this proposal to move forward and to make sure that they had the funds needed to keep their maintenance up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. They organized the meeting. Caleb and I attended the meeting to answer any questions, to try to help facilitate a little bit. But honestly, this meeting was certainly much more well-attended than any meeting that I organized. So I'm not sure what the trick is. But very well done, and, you know, the road committee in the area works really hard to try to stay active and to keep folks engaged, and they're doing a very nice job out there.
Good. Thank you. And again, this is a little bit repetitive, but I just want to make sure we state it clearly that annually, we can and do normally look at our RIDs and make sure that they are collecting enough money to do what they said they were going to do essentially. And so you and Caleb are looking at those and making sure that you bring that, if there is a discrepancy, you're bringing that to the attention of the community or the homeowners that are part of that RID, and then obviously to us, and saying we need to, we recommend taking this action because we want to keep the RID whole. So that's what we're doing. It's an annual look. Often, they don't change. Sometimes we've had a few that have gone less. They had more money than they needed. It's not as common, especially in these times of inflation. But we're looking at those and making sure that that level of service can be sustained. That's our hope.
Mr. Chair, that's absolutely correct. So Caleb and I look at the budget expected to come in, our revenue anticipated. And then we also compare that to what we anticipate each service item will cost. We've seen grading prices about double over the past year. So a lot of these gravel surface districts are seeing the need for an increase this year. This district also, you know, being given its location, has a lot of large lots, a lot of road network with, you know, fairly low-density housing. So that's always a little bit challenging when you have a lot of road miles in a particular district. But that's absolutely it. So we want to make sure that we're able to provide the maintenance that was intended when those folks came together and decided to create a district. If not, you know, if the desire for a district is no longer there, you know, Caleb and I also always offer the option of dissolution. If the RID model is no longer working for folks, we can certainly help to dissolve that district just the same as we can continue to administer it. So that's always discussed as well. But these folks are, you know, willing to pay the additional money to continue to have the road maintenance out in this area, and we're happy to support them in that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. No other questions? What about public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public input on this? Okay. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-75 to levy and assess the Mount Vista Lone Pine Rural Improvement District Number 1996-1, as explained by Ms. Makas.
Second, moved in second to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion?
I just, another example of the people wanting to improve their neighborhood and realizing that inflation has gotten, created difficulty in being able to do everything that the district was set up to do, and realizing that they have to raise taxes on themselves a little bit in order to make it, to be able to complete everything that needs to be done. And I appreciate the work that staff has done here and how complete they are in working with the folks and making sure everybody understands what the costs are. So very, very positive.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, I also would like to say thank you to the community for organizing and looking at these issues and helping us with this decision-making process by really doing the hard work. And our staff as well, thank you for that, because though this is a short experience here and a decision's made, a lot of work has gone into this prior to determine what the needs are and how to sustain the level of service and try to engage the community the best that we can so that we get their input prior to making any decision. So thank you for that. All right, Commissioner, with that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-76 to levy and assess the Prickly Pear Rural Improvement District Number 1985-2. Good morning again.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, again Jessica Makas, Special District's Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you will be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment upon each benefiting property within the Prickly Pear Rural Improvement District. With 161 benefiting properties, a total of $26,803.38 will be assessed annually to fund the maintenance of this district. The Prickly Pear RID was created in 1985 as the result of a citizen-initiated petition to improve and maintain roads throughout the district. It was amended in 2005 to add additional surrounding properties as well as additional roads. There are a total of 4.4 miles of roads in the district. Maintenance provided by this district includes snow removal and sanding as needed, grading, gravel addition and maintenance, chip sealing, drainage maintenance, and other maintenance as necessary to preserve road improvements. You can see this district just in the center, kind of in pink. The maintenance assessment has been divided into three categories based on benefit. The first is Dusty Maiden Drive, Rocky Road, and M. Scotty. These are the hard surface, part of the hard surface roads in the district, and that assessment portion is $23.30 per lot. All lots are assessed for this portion. The second is Meadow Village. This is the trailer court kind of at the bottom center of the district. And that portion of the assessment is $17.23 right now. And the third is the local gravel roads, so all of the other gravel roads within the district. And that assessment is set at $79.66. These assessment rates have been in place since 2005. However, they are not sustainable to cover annual maintenance. This district has both gravel and hard surface roads and has been impacted by the inflation we've seen in the chip seal maintenance and grading maintenance categories. Further, there is an extensive amount of drainage maintenance needed throughout the district. Many culverts have been buried over time and are in need of cleaning or replacement. There's a lack of gravel throughout this district, so when roads are graded, they're not holding up very well. Further, we project roughly 66. Further, we project roughly sixty-six thousand dollar budget shortfall when the hard surface roads are chip sealed, which is tentatively scheduled for two thousand and twenty-seven. We recommend doubling each of the three categories of assessment. So that would put the first category, Dusty Maiden Drive, Rocky Road, and M Scotty up to fifty-two dollars and sixty cents per lot. Meadow Village would go to thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents per lot. And the local gravel road category would go to one hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents per lot. An increase to the assessment will ensure annual maintenance in the Prickly Pear RID can be completed as detailed in the resolution that created the district. An evening meeting was held with residents to discuss the need for this increase at the East Valley Fire Station on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, with a total of nine attendees. Legal notice of the increase in the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on July thirteenth and July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have received no written testimony regarding this increase. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, questions?
Just a comment. I routinely will call some of the people in these districts that you present and and ask if they fully understand what's going on and whatnot. And I made a call to a gentleman that was so enthusiastic about the way you had done things and the the information that you provided. He wanted me to make sure that you got proper accolades, both of, both you and Caleb, because it, he he said, you know, I'm not a guy that likes to have my taxes raised, but they explained the need and how inflation has caused a, made it difficult. And and virtually everybody in the room, he said, was is was there some very supportive of what you had, because you had explained it so well and 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 taken their best interested heart. And he wanted to make sure that that I thanked you properly for what you had, the way you had handled it. And to be sure and pass it on to everybody on staff that you're an example of a great public service, both of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Caleb Marcus and Jade Wells back at our office, Jesse Whitford and under, you know, obviously Director Chambers as well. We have a great, a great team of people working on this behind the scenes. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I agree with all those comments. They have a great team. In terms of this, we do have, it's quite a, quite a large number of participants in this RID. And we had a pretty small number show up, but it sounds like it was a pretty positive meeting overall in terms of understanding the need and concerns.
Mr. Chair, yes, we we did not have a great showing compared to the number of people in the district. However, you know, these meetings tend to start a little rocky and they seem to to come together pretty well by the end. I think once we present numbers and and talk about, you know, just just the reality of the revenue and expenditure that we're facing, and they seem to go pretty well. And again, residents are always welcome to privately maintain roads through an HOA or some other kind of a private road organization. But if if we want to continue with an RID model, this this is our recommendation to folks.
Understood. And as Commissioner Rolf said, at least part of, and this is my guesstimation, that at least part of the reason there wasn't maybe as many people there as there could be is because you do a good job of informing people via mail, via the other information that's available. And all all the folks in this district were noticed with the, not only the opportunity to come to the meeting, but also opportunity to ask questions and or when this has been now recommended that that that's out there for people to have, make comment or come to this meeting or call you at any time. All of those opportunities were available. Right?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, a postcard notice goes out for that evening public meeting. So everybody is invited to that evening meeting, recognizing that people are busy in the evening, though, of course. And then for this public hearing, though, legal notice is sent to every property owner. There's also, you know, a description of the district, a description of of what we're proposing. There's a phone number to call. We didn't even receive a single phone call about this one. So.
All right. Well, it is, it's good for us to go over this because it's, we want to make sure that we've done our best and we we actually go above and beyond legal requirements to make sure that we try to share with the community what the proposal is or what the need is or what the concern is around the amount of money in the fund. And if we want to continue to keep the same level of service, what we're going to need to do. So I appreciate all of your work on that, trying to inform the public and it makes difference. Those that choose to engage, I'm sure they're they're passionate and there's an education process as well as you know, help us figure out how to move forward here. What do you want to do? So really appreciate that. Anything else, Commissioner? Okay. Thank you. And this is another opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right, Commissioner, looks like we're ready to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-six, seventy, yeah, seventy-six to levy and assess the Prickly Pear Rural Improvement District number nineteen eighty-five dash two, as explained by Ms. Makas.
Second, moved and seconded approved the resolution as presented. Further discussion? Just again, thanks to all of you and thanks to the community folks that have participated in this. It helps us again to be in a better place to make a good decision if we understand how things are going and what people need and want and what they're willing to to do. So I appreciate that. With that, Commissioner, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. We are at that point in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any further public comment? Any public comment? Any public? All right. Hearing no public comment, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.